Good evening. Another clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Fulton.
Here.
Treasurer Horning.
Here.
Joe Few.
Here.
Trustee Colley Ainge.
Here.
Trustee Germain.
Here.
Trustee Harper.
Here.
Trustee Petrucci.
Here.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Treasurer Horning, seconded by Trustee Germain. Is there any discussion? Being none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number five is call to the public. Anybody at call to the public this evening? Good evening.
Katie Schluter, 1575 Shoreline Drive. I wanted to comment on the agenda. Item number seven, site plan 531, special land use permit. I wasn't unable to attend the public hearing due to death in the family. I'm not opposed to the expansion of the Speedway into the Mobile Oil Site, but I do have some concerns as both the Speedway and the Mobile Site are known leaking storage tank sites, underground leaking storage tank sites. Per search look at the DQ storage tank facility list online seems to indicate that they are still open, which means that it's a location where a release has occurred and where corrective actions have not yet been completed to meet the appropriate land use criteria. Speedway was a Class 1, which is an imminent threat to health and safety environment and sensitive environmental receptors. And the Mobile Site was also impacted by a plume from the Bolt Petroleum Site years ago that migrated across M-59. This was a matter of public record and also during a public hearing back in 2005, the owner, the then-owner of the Mobile Site commented to that effect that his land was impacted from a plume reaching to the south across M-59. Great care will be needed to take care of the soils and the groundwater on the site. Also during, let's see, both sites ultimately outlet onto Round Lake, which is a headwaters for the north or Creek-Shai-Washi Water Set. Extra care measures will need to be taken in the redevelopment of the two parcels in terms of onset soils, groundwater, and contaminants that they are removed safely and do not migrate off the site. It's very gratifying to see that so many of you have been serving the public for so long and do have some historical memory of when the interchange came through at M-23 and M-59. And the areas that used to retain stormwater and help the lake out are no longer there. During the interchange, a control structure was removed and we saw over a weekend that the new high-water mark was reached on Round Lake. Eventually, it was put back, a control structure was put back to retain water. However, it was put back at an elevation three feet below the old control. So really, it's more of a pass-through than a retention area at this point. And so, we just want to make sure that every effort is made to contain any contaminants that are on-site. One other point is that the nature preserve that is across M-23 along Blain Road is actually the very site that the water is outlet from across M-23, specifically the corner of Old M-23 and M-59. And that was a project that was worked with a collaboration of the township, the Livingston Land Conservancy, the Livingston Drain Commission, residents, business owners, developers, and we wouldn't want to do anything that could contaminate that site, especially because we really preserved it for, to preserve our natural history and the integrity of the drainage system. And one last point, there have been two incidents this year of some sewage backup from that corner. Two different restaurants were involved. It was a matter of grease building up and then causing an overflow of sewage into the parking lot. Luckily, everything was contained in both cases and nothing went off-site. But that potential is there and as I understand, there will be a small cafe in the Speedway Site. So I just want to see if the board would entertain and just make sure that they get assurances from the developer that not just best practices are used, but extra precautions are used to protect the environment in this case. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else tonight? Call to the public? Being none, we'll move on to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda.
So moved. Forward.
Motion by Trustee Harper, seconded by Trustee Petrucci. Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions on items J, N, and O. Would you prefer to remove them or just have me ask my simple questions?
Why don't you go ahead and ask?
Okay. Let's go with O first, the approval of the change order for the MEAC Foster Wheeler for testing, monitoring wells with the wastewater treatment plant, which we used to have but don't have any longer. My question is, are we approving a one-year amendment for our contract for that amount or for all three years at the same time? Because they gave us the three-year proposal, which is over $25,000. I just want a clarification on what we're actually approving tonight.
It's going to be a three-year extension.
So the $8,800 annually is correct, but it would be multiplied by three? Not 75. It's not a three-year contract for $25,000 a year.
Correct, yes.
And then on items J and N, I have no qualms with approving these particular budget amendments. But as I recall, we have, when we prepared our last budget, we allowed a surplus amount of money to handle issues like this. And it seems like if we're not going to use it, then why didn't we do it? So that's more of a theoretical question. James and I discussed that some yesterday and I'd just like to get clarification on that.
I'm not clear what your question is. We budgeted, if I may, real quick, I appreciate you bringing it up. We budgeted a contingency line-up this year for the first year. J was a perfect opportunity for us to do that as a reappropriation within that amount and we missed that opportunity, so that, we definitely could have done that. In the case of N, it's still a purchase in excess of $10,000 or the boards would still have to approve it. The budget amendment, yes, we could have handled internally. You're correct. For the landscaping. You've seen it could have been done internally. The budget amendment for the landscaping purchase, we could have, yes.
I'm only bringing this up because I thought we did that in an effort to try to be more efficient at our board meetings. And then I saw this come through and, like I said, I don't have any problems with it being added, but we're defeating our purposes if we don't exercise that option when it's possible. That's all.
Okay. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Being none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number seven is applicant number 531, Speedway Site Plan with Special Land Use. Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to, at this point, turn this over to Trustee Colley Ainge, who's our liaison from the Planning Commission. And Joe, if you'd be willing to give us, as a board, just a brief update as to the site plan and any issues that you'd like to bring forward, and we'll turn it over to the applicant.
Well, I believe, I have site plan number 531 is the proposed rebuild of Speedway at the southwest corner, or southeast corner of M-59 and Old U.S. 23. The reason why it's before us is because it is a special land use and it requires approval of the Township Board. The, it was, the site plan was approved by the Planning Commission. I think we went through several items, including the landscape plan that was presented. And I'll have the applicant kind of go through all the details that were approved. But the one item that came up that was discussed was the brick that was being proposed by the applicant and the brick that the Planning Commission recommended, which is an actual brick. The applicant had proposed, what do they call, I guess it's a medicinary block that is painted. And they planned on scoring it similar to what you would do if you were, you know, basically like a brick. However, it's similar to what is used at Walmart. However, the Planning Commission was of the opinion that the reason why Walmart was allowed to do that was because of some of the special things that Walmart did with regard to its whole project. It went over and above a lot of the conditions required to meet their plan development. There's not much here in terms of the size, so in the end, to be consistent with what is already around there, the Planning Commission chose that they requested the applicant to utilize the, basically, real brick for their, part of their architectural plan. Other than that, I can't recall if there was anything else. I know there was some discussion regarding marking the sidewalk and we had some concerns, I think, I'm trying to remember now. That's about it. No, I know there was some discussion on the walk. Why don't you go through?
Okay. Thank you for having us here this evening. As everyone knows, the site is located at the southeast corner of M-59 and Old U.S. 23. Speedway has already purchased this small section here, which is the Fountain Square Access Drive and then also the Mobile Site. That will be combined to include one parcel, so there will be a lot combination on all three parcels. The current access for the site is one full access drive on M-59 and one full access drive on 23, on Old U.S. 23. The existing site is 2.34 acres and then the proposed, or that will be the actual size of the overall site, sorry. Oh wait, no, sorry. It's 2.34 acres is the existing site. The overall site wants us to join will be 3.64 acres. The existing site currently has a 23, 24 square foot building with six fueling dispensers, which are in a stacked configuration. As you'll see on the proposed site, the, oh, I forgot the site plan. It got deleted somehow. We'll go to the landscape. As you can see on the proposed site, the proposed dispensers are in a, what we call a dive-in configuration. What this will allow is, I know currently, I stopped by there on the way here to get gas and all the dispensers were full and mobile, to travel around the site was very difficult because it is very congested. This does allow much easier access for vehicles to pull in and pull out, so you won't have, with the stacked configuration currently, all the congestion on-site existing. The proposed site is going to be a 6,100 square foot retail or convenience store. And that is actually, this is the first time we're ever going to be doing this building on a site, so it's a new prototype for Speedway and you guys get the first up-and-coming, so. It will have nine dispensers. And again, that is the dive-in configuration, so it will help flow on-site. And it is, also sits further back in the site, anywhere from 17 to 24 feet because of the other one is on an angle. So that will, I know when cars are turning in now, if another car is there, it gets backed up sometimes. So it will allow more room for vehicles to enter the site and get out of the way as they enter. The proposed site of, there will be, everything on-site will be completely demolished, including all the underground storage tanks. So there will be environmental on-site to mediate any concerns that are discovered and they will be doing testing during demolition on the Mobile Site and the Speedway Site to make sure that any soils are handled accordingly and disposed of or handled properly. So that will be taken care of during the demolition process. The new tanks also will be, obviously, the newer technology, the double wall. They will have all the leak detection safeguards. The dispensers will have the stumps, which will help just prevent any future contamination with the newer technology that is available with the underground storage tanks. Let's see here. The site does have an outdoor seating area for people who get food to co-sit at the tables and enjoy their meal before they leave the site. It will be 24-hour operation. We do have 74 parking stalls proposed. Some of those, 39 of those are actually over here near the Fountain Square. Those will be a shared parking agreement so that the Fountain Square does have additional parking because I know that is a concern now. The proposed access for the site will actually, the Fountain Square Drive is going to be shifted and will be a full access drive. There is a cross-access drive that will allow vehicles that are leaving the Speedway or coming from the Fountain Square, so they will not have to go onto M-59 in order to get to the Speedway. I know Speedway went and did a quick count for the peak hour and I believe around 7% of the traffic was leaving Speedway and going to Fountain Square, like that, making that movement. So that will help reduce a little bit of the traffic currently that is leaving and entering and vice versa, so. And then it'll also have a full access drive on Old U.S. 23. The drive on, the existing drive to the Speedway Site is being modified slightly. It will not allow left-out. It'll be a right-out and then it'll allow left-in, right-in movements. The sidewalks that are proposed, this was just a quick exhibit to kind of show what was brought up at the Planning Commission. What we will be making this change in our final construction documents as we move forward on this was one of the conditions at the Planning Commission. The sidewalk that we had showing here is just being shifted to butt the parking area with seven foot wide instead of five feet to allow the car overhang and people to get out of their vehicles and immediately get onto the sidewalk to walk through the site. And then we are also, there is a current sidewalk here crossing and then there is also a sidewalk being added that would allow customers to walk along the side of the drive there and up to the Fountain Square Building. So that will be added to the final construction plans for the Planning Commission. And then there was also another sidewalk that they requested to connect Old 27 to the actual site.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
The current driveway that's right there in the front on M-59, is that being moved or is it going to be in the same position where it is right now?
It's moved.
This one right here?
That one there.
Yeah. Is that being moved east or is that staying where it is?
Do you know?
It's generally.
It's generally the same location, that's what I was, yeah. So that one is staying in the same location? The Fountain Square driveway was shifted 50 feet about to the east, is that correct, Robert? About 50 feet to the east. One other thing too is the detention pond, the existing pond that is for the Fountain Square will be expanded in this location here. It'll be in the front yard between the parking and then the 23 right-of-way here. And that will accommodate all the storm for the additional paved area added here and for the developed Speedway Site. As you can see, there's extensive landscaping being added to the site as well. On the corner, there will be a decorative wall in this, in this area here, which will match the, I know the other four corners all have the decorative wall with landscaping, so that will be included in the corner. And then there is also a decorative pilaster and aluminum, black aluminum wrought iron fence item here in front of that landscaping, just to help break up and buffer the site from the roadway. At this time, Robert Matco with CESO is here as well to discuss the traffic.
Good evening. I'll briefly just walk us through what we looked at in terms of the traffic on the site. The existing conditions, the existing Speedway Site, as Mandy has indicated, has 12 fueling positions. The current site is served by two full-access site driveways, one on M-59 and one on Old U.S. 23. Northbound left-turn movement currently at the M-59 Speedway driveway operates at a failing level of service. And it's one of the reasons we prohibited that, that movement right at that driveway. And it'll also help internal congestion as well at the, at the new operation. The key study intersection, which is M-59 and Old U.S. 23, currently operates in an overall level of service C in the AM peak hour and D in the PM peak hour. And levels of service are ranked, just like a letter grade in school, from A to an F being, being a poor condition. The proposed condition, the proposed expansion again shows, as Mandy indicated, six additional fueling positions, which would be a total of 18. So we're showing nine dispensers, but there's two pumps at each one, so there's a total of 18 fueling positions. Again, that's six additional. The proposed expansion will provide, again, one additional access point from Fountain Square Drive, creating an internal cross-access between Speedway, Fountain Square, and Heartland Town Center. As indicated, the outbound left-turn movement will be restricted and prohibited at the M-59 and existing Speedway driveway. The old Speedway, U.S. 23 and Speedway driveway, it's, we shifted, it's shifted as far to the south property line as it currently can exist. And again, it's approximately in the same location as what's there now, but it is as far to the south as possibly can be shifted. The proposed Speedway building, again, as Mandy indicated, will be shifted back further, anywhere from 17 to 21 feet. And that, that additional space is certainly needed. It, again, provides additional maneuvering space, creating improved internal site circulation. And we feel that that, that's a big component of what, what's happening out there now with the type of configuration on how the pumps are. It's a little bit difficult getting, getting in and circulating around the station. So some of these internal improvements will certainly help the internal flow and the way the traffic routes around the site. The westbound left-turn movement into the Speedway driveway will operate at a level service C condition. That one there is, is the one that, that MDOT, that and also the old U.S. 23, I'm sorry, that and also the left-turn into Fountain Square Drive were the, were the two real big concerns that MDOT had to make sure that it wouldn't back up into the spooey. We did go through significant modeling. The traffic impact study that was done was over approximately an eight-to-nine month period. We worked with MDOT and the county through the entire process. Everything from, you know, a couple of weeks and middle on volumes, directional distribution. So it was, it was an effort, again, that took a long time and we had to make sure that, that the analysis, you know, studied every possible issue that could, could happen with the site. Again, the key, key study intersections, you know, will operate at or near the existing levels of service in the AM peak hour and the PM peak hours. And again, there may be questions on, you know, how can that be? But there are certain things that are being done. Specifically, those are, again, we're relocating the Fountain Square driveway approximately 45 feet to the east, creating additional westbound to southbound left-turn storage space for the existing Speedway driveway. Again, analysis shows that the westbound left-turn at Fountain Square will not queue back into the U.S. 23 spooey. As discussed earlier, internal circulation created, created from shared access driveway between Speedway, Fountain Square, and Heartland Town Center will eliminate the need to drive out onto M-59 to access another site. Speedway did conduct their own count, just to determine the amount of current traffic that does go back and forth, or actually out of the Fountain Square and into the Speedway and vice versa. And again, that, that percent was actually 7.5% of the existing Speedway traffic that currently performs that maneuver. So having that cross-access point is certainly going to help as well with some of the traffic. We also noted the proposed Speedway building location will be shifted back further to the south than the existing building location, thereby providing additional maneuvering space created, creating improved site circulation. Also have a dedicated outbound left and right-turn lane at the Old U.S. 23 and Speedway driveway. Our analysis did not remove pass-by trips. Pass-by trips, in the case of a Speedway site, can be as much as over 50% of the, of the through traffic. Those were not removed just to try and create a conservative analysis. I know MDOT was, was pleased that that was done as well. So we did try to present the most conservative analysis we could. Again, pass-by trips, they, for a service station with even a convenience facility, it can be a reduction of 56 to 60%. And that, again, that volume would be taken off the through movement. The driveway volume would still, you know, be the same, but those, those trips would come off of the through. Again, after several meetings and an eight-month stage review, the Michigan Department of Transportation and the Livingston County Road Commission both reviewed and approved the Speedway traffic impact study. I also just have a quick, just a video, just from the modeling that just kind of shows. You can see up here, if we can get it to run. Hopefully it can run here. I'll try and get this to work. What this video would, would show is, again, this, this key movement right here, this, this westbound left into Fountain Square and also the westbound left into the Speedway driveway, you know, are the two movements that, again, have the most, most impact on not only the, the MDOT route, but, you know, can certainly cause issues with, with safety. So those two movements were, were strictly looked at. In addition, again, the outbound left at the existing Speedway drive, which, again, was prohibited due to the failing level service. So again, you can see here with the video running, again, you can just kind of see, this is the Speedway drive right here. And again, that's a right-in, right-out, left-in. So you can see some of the cars turning left in here. This right here too is during the weekday PM peak hour. So, you know, you'll, you'll start to see some congestion happen back here at this intersection. It'll start to queue up as well as, it'll start to queue here a little bit as well. You know, the spooey still seems to be operating okay. This is with a slight signal timing change at 23. And then also here, you can see the left into the driveway down here and how this queue kind of backs, you know, backs up to about right in this area. And there are some, some potential modifications later that could happen here and that is bright turn overlaps could be installed, you know, should more additional queuing backup on, on Old U.S. 23. Again, this just kind of shows an overall view of the system of the entire model that was run. This model, again, was also worked on and reviewed by not only the county but MDOT. So you can see all the way down here on how, how the traffic is flowing.
Is this showing the current driveways for Speedway or the future?
This is showing the future. I could show the current and the model we ran and it does, it does back up. You know, we have some, some queuing issues. We have queuing issues here. We, obviously, the left fails, so, you know, if, if the existing was shown, obviously, it did show some, some issues, which obviously can currently be seen at the site should you travel out there, you know, today during a PM peak hour. We do feel with some of these just different improvements in internal site circulation that, you know, it's going to be a significant improvement over what's there now.
The reason I was asking is because I think the new Speedway doesn't have that cute angle when you pull off of 23. Is it more perpendicular?
I think it's still kind of wraps up. Yeah. It, it probably doesn't wrap up quite that much. It probably comes in a little bit more. You're correct. You can see some of the queue here to start to queue back up. And that was just kind of a short video, just to show some of the simulation modeling that was done with regards to the traffic. So I thank you for your time. So I thank you for your time, and I'll be able to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board members have any questions?
All set.
I'm sorry.
Oh, man, I was hoping to introduce you to the new store that was.
Sure, absolutely. I'm sorry.
I'm Mike Bergman. I'm a construction specialist with Speedway. And as Mandy had mentioned, this is the first time that we'll be constructing this particular type of store. There, thanks. It's primarily a masonry building, which will be the clay face brick and frosted glass across the merchandising area and the area that would be presented to the motors and customers that are fueling. And then we use metal panels to, here we go. Then we used metal panels and a roof to highlight or just point out the main customer entrance. It's a pretty significant departure from our, the two stores. We have two prototype stores that we currently build. Both of those are a long linear store that has a hip roof, which works well in suburban and even when we're getting close to, you know, residential areas. This store is, will fit better in the context of a shopping center like we're proposing it here. It also includes a new food program. It's called our Speed Cafe. I don't know if any of you might have been to the Speedway that's in Dundee, but it'd be the same program where there are sandwiches available, being made actually in the store as you order them. So there'll be burgers, chicken sandwiches. My favorite are the paninis. And be able to order those at a tablet, and then the consumer, the customer service reps will create those sandwiches for you, and then there's sides to go along with that. So we have included some seating inside the store and are proposing three outdoor, and they're not shown in that elevation, but we are proposing three outdoor tables for seating.
So in the planning commission, the original early documents were right-in, right-out on the speed, the old Speedway document that's changed to making a left-in now at the old Speedway entrance.
You can't make a left-in, not like the, you can't make a left into that one location, the first driveway into the fountain where she could.
No, you can't make a left-in. Yes.
That one, but not the one.
No, you can't also at the Speedway.
You left at both entrances now, according to the plan, right?
Yes. You just cannot make a left out of the existing Speedway, the furthest to the west, the existing.
That's where I was thinking. You can't make a left out.
Right here, it's, everything's channelized to force you to the right. But you can make a left in here and also a left in here.
Okay. In your traffic study, you had going westbound, making a turn into the new shared driveway, one or two cars at most. I saw four cars going in there. There's over 100 and some parking spots in that complex, and I'm just thinking about a Friday night dinner thing. You're going to have 100 cars coming in there probably in a two-hour period.
Yeah. The maximum.
You don't think there's going to be a stacking problem on the west bounds?
Well, that was, again, that was the big, that was the concern that MDOT had as well. And we feel we have created a conservative analysis. Now, there are gaps, obviously, to get through. The maximum queue length, I believe, that did happen there or occurred was about 190 feet. So you're looking at probably about nine vehicles at any time. And obviously, that is the reason that there is this relief valve to this left, keeping this left. And MDOT did agree that we had to have both this left into Fountain Square and this left into the existing Speedway to make this site work. But yes, there is sufficient queue to get these vehicles in, as well as the Speedway. Thank you.
I think the key aspect of that, too, is it relieves us, is that the Speedway also now has access to Fountain Square, and the gas station never had. Right now, it doesn't have that access. So you're limited. You get stacking from, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I was more concerned, I guess, when it was only a right-in, right-out, to tell you the truth, because anybody that wanted to go into either Fountain Square or the gas station had to go in that shared driveway. So it eases my concern a little bit by being able to make a left in the old Speedway driveway. But I still think at dinnertime on a Friday night, I think that westbound lane's going to back up a little bit.
Yeah. And I think, you know, the analysis, again, it did show about eight to nine vehicles was the worst situation that came about. And again, we're talking about the weekday PM peak hour, which is the worst hour. Obviously, during other hours, it's not going to be as bad, but we're dealing with the worst hour, and you're correct. We also do have, I mean, not that we want people to go down here to old US-23 and turn left, but it is another option as well. But again, the first two options, the two lefts in, you know, should accommodate the traffic with the additional gap, too, from the signal at old US-23 and M-59. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. What is the purpose for adding, the primary purpose for adding the parking that's on the east side of the new driveway? Is that going to be for both Speedway and Fountain Square?
This area here? Yeah, the reason for that was in the agreements when we were purchasing the Fountain Square parcel is they needed some additional parking, from what I understand. So it was part of the agreements in order to purchase, to get Fountain Square to sell their current access drive location and work agreements out with shared parking so that they did have more parking to accommodate their facility as well.
Okay. Now, for the Speedway store itself, with the convenience items, grocery items, those types of things, plus the restaurant, what is the number of parking spaces that you would typically need? And are all those on your, on the gas station side, you know, on the west side of the driveway? Or will some of those also be parking on the other side of the driveway? Am I clear on my question?
Yes. This is, as has been mentioned, this is the first time that we have proposed this building. So we don't have historical data. Typically, on a, one of our smaller convenience stores, we'll be looking at 20 to 25 parking spaces, and we're proposing 30, 35 here, which we believe should be adequate to, for that parking all to occur on our, on the Speedway site.
Is there the possibility, though, that someone might park on the west side and walk to Speedway? And if so, I know you said you're putting a sidewalk along the access drive to Fountain Square. Is there a crosswalk across there?
There's going to be a crosswalk in this location right here, and then there's also a sidewalk that connects the both areas together.
Okay. And then the last question I have is, how is the parking lot topography going to change? Because right now, the old mobile gas station site is up fairly high, and the parking lot behind it is fairly low. Is that going to be a rolling hill or?
No, we will be cutting in the parking lot area. It will slope upward. However, it won't be, you know, it'll meet your typical grades for a parking lot area. It's not excessive. So it will tie in, in this current location right here actually is where it ties in, and then it will have, its storm is right along the property line, if I remember correctly, and then it does drain back up. So it will, all the water will drain, obviously, back towards its own storm system, and then it will go into the shared system as well, so.
And the materials in our packets that I reviewed, you indicated, whoever put the packet together from Speedway's, that any contaminated soil on the old mobile site that's encountered during the parking lot construction would also be remediated, getting back to the comment from the gal at the public.
Yes, the environmental consultant will be on site during the demolition, and if any contaminated soils, they'll be doing testing. And if any contaminated soils are found, they will be remediated, hauled off to the proper landfill or reused accordingly, depending on what is found and what is acceptable in that.
Okay. And then this last question is just purely out of curiosity. Right now, Fountain Square has a non-conforming sign that's very high in the sky. Is that going away or is it remaining?
That will remain in place. It's on the Fountain Square parcel. It's not on the purchased parcel.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, it's currently showing. It's this sign right here is, I'm sure, what you're referring to.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions? Juan?
I just got a quick one. Besides gasoline, will you be offering other types of fuel?
It will have a diesel fuel and E-85, is that what you mean? Or like kerosene? What do you?
Yeah, kerosene.
It will not have kerosene. It'll have diesel, E-85, or flex fuel, and then, of course, standard fuel.
Good to hear.
He's a pilot. He just wants to know.
Actually, there was two reasons. I have a tractor that's diesel, and I just lost my supplier when they switched the shell to VP. If, all I got to drive quite a ways to get diesel fuel for my tractor, I will be needing kerosene in the future.
Yeah, the site will have two diesel dispensers on the site.
You said there's going to be some, you said that the sites can be demolished. Is there going to be a business interruption?
Yeah, the site will close down for three to four months. For, have to shut down, obviously, in order to completely demolish everything and then
You know, I just want to say that, you know, I really like what you're going to do there. I think it's really nice. I think it's very pleasant to look at rather than what we have. But I just wanted to pass on to you that the people of Heartland Township really want you to lower your prices. I mean, I saw, I saw your sign on that picture, and it said 888. You know, you're already 30 cents higher than everybody else around us. You know, I can't tell you how many people in Heartland Township avoid going to your business, because you're, you just, they feel like they're being gouged. And I often wonder how much business you really lose by them not going there to get gas and then going into your convenience store to buy other products, because that's where the real money is. I just don't understand that. I mean, I understand that, you know, and I'm all for free enterprise, and I'm all for businesses, and I'm all for you making money and all that stuff. But when you're 30 cents a gallon higher, and I know you're by the freeway, and you could be a few cents higher than the normal station, I understand that. But 30 cents, 25, 30 cents, and that's not unusual for you to be that high. I think that's gouging our public. And I can't tell you how many people in our community avoid you. And they'll go to, they'll go to Brighton, they'll go three miles down road to Hickory Ridge, they'll go to Fenton, but they won't go to that Speedway station, and that's really a shame. I just wanted to pass that on to you. Probably won't do any good because you're busier than hell over there, but I think you should know that, that we look at your business as a partnership, but we don't feel like there's a partnership really there with our community.
Any other comments? If there are no comments, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve site plan. Move to approve special land use permit for Speedway, Site Plan Application Number 531, subject to the conditions established by the Heartland Township Planning Commission on August 13, 2015. Support?
Motion by trustee Kalani, second by trustee Harper. Is there any final discussion or questions? Being done, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those who oppose, nay. Motion carries. Welcome to Heartland.
I do have one question. How long do you, how long do you, I've heard that it only takes 30 days for you guys to do the whole deal. Is that true?
To do the full construction? No. For the tear down and for the new construction, it'll take about three to four months.
Okay. Great, thanks.
And when would you anticipate that starting?
Yeah, ideally, we'd like to start doing some of the off-site work this year, obviously, and then pay bills as soon as the weather, that's when we start.
Three to four months is no problem. I feel sorry for the people on the freeway, but the people in Heartland don't go there anyways, so.
This store is going to be very similar to the one on Jolly Road in Lansing, correct?
It will be bigger.
Okay.
But I mean, it's a different building. That one there is a 4,600 square foot, but it's 6,500 square foot.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item number 8A. That's a comprehensive plan amendment. Manager Whitman, was this on your radar here?
I can touch on it. Yeah, and trustee Kalani could probably be more expert on it, but obviously, we've talked about this at joint meeting with the planning commission. This is an amendment to the existing plan, and covers a lot of, the future land use map in particular, obviously, looking at the market and study, market study that was done, and took a look at potential uses coming in and seeing, making sure that our future land use map aligned with what the market was probably looking for. I know they put in a lot of work. Can you expand on that?
Yeah, much of the work was done in 2014, and the final, you know, review by the planning commission, we had our public hearing, we had comments. We certainly looked at identifying areas that would best be suited according to the market analysis that we were looking at in terms of the housing market analysis. Although generally, I mean, although there were a few, things changed on the comprehensive map, overall, it was more of a cleanup from the previous map, I would say. So I don't think there's a whole lot.
There wasn't a lot of major.
Not, no, there wasn't a lot of major changes. There were some things, some of the property owners on 59, you know, when we were looking at areas that were previously in an area that were identified as, I think, commercial, not commercial, but multi-housing, and it didn't fit with the office. It was the office and multi-housing, I think we were looking at, how we can make sure that that, there were certain areas that were never going to be where they're located, would ever be in multi-housing off of 59, on the north side of 59. I think we went back to making them more into, I think, into what's already there, which is basically office space, so.
Is, this is, this has to be reviewed every, is it every five years?
Yeah, every five years.
And was this part of that five-year? I think we talked about looking at this every year.
I think they do. They've been looking at it every year, the planning.
Yeah, this is, the last amendment was in 2011, so this will be a 2015 update to that. What we put in the strategic plan is that we're, this is originally 2004 plan, we probably really need to talk about the next time doing a full redo.
That's what I recall.
And in the strategic plan, it's, we've targeted 2017, and we'll talk about that further down the road as a time to set the plan or get the ball rolling on having a new plan by 2020.
I think mostly the work had to do with aligning some things with the market analysis of where some of the medium-density and higher-density residential might be located, and aligning the map with some of that market analysis. If you look at the map, you can probably. If you look at the map, you can probably pull it up, there are a couple of areas we identified that fell in line with more of the market proposal, proposal, I mean, the market analysis. Where is the future land use permit? Here we go.
I was trying, was it in the?
Yeah, it's right here. You just gotta go down.
Page 191.
Yep. Couple of things that we changed. As you might recall, Bill, when we were on the Planning Commission, we had identified those areas that, like Springer Field as potentially being a village commercial, we don't see that changing, we saw that not changing to what it's exist, existing, and we, it's, we made that public as opposed to village commercial.
And we did get a document this week that shows that that may be municipal use forever.
Right, right.
I think we just found that. Kathy, was that correct? We're still doing some research on it.
And then if you look at the areas right around Dunham and east of Clark, that's one of the areas we identified as a, as a higher-density area, that potential higher-density residential. And then further down on Old 23, adjacent to what would be Metaveo Estates, I believe, area, over in that area, there's a higher-density area that we identified. We thought that would be an ideal place to meet some of the market demands based on the analysis that was done. Those were the, I would say, those were the three large areas, and then in our commercial and office area, there were a few areas that we just decided to, I mean, identify them.
And it looks like you still kept the special planning area as part of the?
Yes, we didn't.
Strategy?
We didn't make any changes to that.
Okay. Did the language stay in there? As it was, there was some language in the document?
We didn't change that.
Didn't change that, okay.
Any other questions?
Now, is some of your reasoning for keeping that, some of that higher-density that, like off Clark Road and Old 23, is it, is it the vicinity to, like, the freeway and access? Is that what some of the thought process was with that?
I think part of that is certainly part of the discussion, but also because of the adjacent, that if you look at what is there and right around it, it has the potential of having sewer and water there.
Okay.
Not necessarily water, but sewer. So it makes more sense, we already have, like, Cobblestone and Millpoint, it follows that kind of, you know, area, plus it's, it's based on our market analysis, is what's needed in the township. Or what the demand would be in the township.
Any other questions for Trustee Kalani?
No, I just will make an observation that the area in Section 15 that was modified to a higher-density area, that is extremely, extremely low ground with a high-water table, and the only way it could ever really be developed is if you run sewer to it and water.
No, I would agree with you on that.
Okay, we need to have a motion to?
To a resolution.
To a resolution. All right, well, entertain a motion for the, oh, this is the Planning Commission.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the 2015 amendment to the Heartland Township Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Motion by Clerk Shofu, second by Treasurer Horning. I just wanted, is it in here? The one I just pulled up was the PC resolution. Does somebody else find it?
It says move to per resolution to adopt 2015.
I understand, but it's, it's not printed out kinda like this resolution is typically do it.
Yeah, it.
I like to have the.
Didn't make it today.
It was in the agenda software. I'll have to take a look. I see what you're saying, I haven't seen it either. So without, yeah, let me.
Should it just be, we'll do the same in substantial?
Yeah, you don't have it in your packet, it would appear.
Well, it would be in substantial form is what the Planning Commission adopted, correct?
Correct.
So you could probably still do the resolution, just indicate in the substantial format as adopted by the Planning Commission.
So I can recite, after the recitals, the resolution itself is, be it resolved that Heartland Township Board of Trustees, Livingston County, Michigan hereby adopts the 2015 amendment to the Comprehensive Plan as recommended by the Heartland Township Planning Commission on July 30, 2015, in its entirety, and directs staff to provide copies of the final adopted amendments as required by the Michigan Plan Enabling Act, PA 33 as amended.
Do you still support that, our move in support?
So there's a, we have a motion by Clerk Shofu in support. Any other discussion? Being none, I'll have the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Germaine?
Yes.
Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Clerk Shofu, yes. Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Supervisor Fulton?
Yes.
Trustee Colian?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number 8B is water treatment plant transition outlay. Good evening, Mr. West. You have the floor.
Basically, what you have before you is the remaining investment required for the cost of entry for the water treatment plant operations transition. Looking to purchase these items in the next 30 days in anticipation for the kickoff on October 1st.
There's about $30,000 worth of tools, equipment, and whatnot, and that, that cost combined with the trucks that the board already approved, actually comes in under the budget that we had originally put forth. Doing one large purchase to get these all done and ready to go.
So with this, this is under the agenda, BA, 8BA?
8B, yeah.
Okay. I'll move to approve the purchase of the remaining assets required for the water system operations not to exceed $30,000. Support.
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Trustee Germaine. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Board reports. We are in our first meeting in September. Trustee Harper?
No report.
Trustee Petrucci?
No report.
Clerk Shofu?
No report.
Treasurer Horning?
No report.
Trustee Kalani?
Only that Hero Board met about a week ago, Monday, and they will be manning the warming tent for the Winter Fest, this coming up winter. What date is it? February?
It was last Saturday in January.
Last Saturday in January. The day before, I'm sure, Super Bowl Sunday, right? Day before Super Bowl Sunday. So I will, yes, that's all I have to report.
Okay. Trustee Germaine?
I have no report, but I have a question. We have a State of the Township address coming up on Monday, October 19th, which I believe is also the same date as the next Hero Board. So my question is, at which that board meets at 6 o'clock, do we anticipate that event being completed within two hours?
I hope so.
Me too.
Yeah, you talk to your speaker.
If it's over two hours.
No, I don't, I anticipate the event, maybe like a 15-minute get-together, warming thing.
James, let's talk about speaking 20 minutes to a half. We don't wanna drag this out, and then you could network, talk to people, maybe some small questions and answers at the end. I anticipate it being done by 5:30. That would be my goal. That's an hour and a half. Does that sound okay?
Yep, make it an hour.
Make it an hour. Okay, manager report.
I think, Mr. Supervisor, just two things I would call from the operation report. Just a reminder of our work session next Tuesday, and we've scheduled that for 6:30. And if you have need for refreshments or whatnot, let me know that, please, and we'll have that, and we'll make the most use of that time diving into CIP. And I do have to just continue to celebrate the results of our assessing audit. We did get confirmation from the state that we are just the third unit in the state to have a perfect audit score, and we'll be putting together a news release tomorrow. And for those that recall, it's definitely been a long road, and we've been investing in that and make sure those records are good a number of steps along the way since the day I've been here, so it was definitely nice to see that ending to it. So thank you to everybody involved and for assessing for their hard work. I was happy to answer any questions.
Explain all this stuff here.
Yeah, so the State of the Township address, we are gonna be sending out those postcard invitations to some of the community leaders and representatives from other units of government, but we have extra copies that if you wanted to hand out, those are, they're for you, anybody you wanted to pass along that information to. Thank you for reminding me.
Are you sending those out to the countywide officials, all, all the different county and the state and the house representatives?
Yeah, and we had already reached out to Senator Hewin and Representative Valpelle, and they tentatively said that that date could work. Their schedule is, can change at the last minute, so they are already aware of it. And then we would invite other state, county, and local officials as well, including the schools. This'll be our, our turn to host the school board, and that will be part of this evening as well.
You don't have an RSVP on here. Do we have any idea how many people do it?
Yeah, we'll play by your, 'cause I mean, we're certainly, certainly, it's an open invitation as well to residents and to the business community, and the chamber will be promoting that, so we will just be, you know.
How come our friendly by nature logo isn't?
So that, that's a good discussion. I mean, the friendly by nature is for, I mean, this is official township business, so we do kinda, sometimes that does overlap, and we'll use the branding, 'cause this is a official township business, we use the seal. That is something we could talk about. I know we're gonna talk about branding in a work session at some point.
Well, I don't know if it's gonna be part of the discussion on, at the State of the Township, but I think that that's an opportune time. If we're going to have local businesses and local officials here, I think the more people we can get exposed to our brand?
Yep.
The better. And I understand when you say it's not official township business, but it is our brand, and I'm thinking, I mean, it's okay, I mean, this is mine, you're not gonna change it now, but I think anytime we can kind of put that, even if we're on the back somehow, or whatever, the more exposure on that branding item, I think is gonna be good, and, you know, I think that's, that's just, I'd like to see it more, and I, eventually, I'd like to see it in the concepts of our wayward signs that we're talking about.
Yep, you will.
Okay.
And we are working on a new letterhead design right now that incorporates that as well in the bottom corner, along with our seal, so.
Very good.
Yep.
Part of that branding is, and I didn't bring it up, but the three of us have kinda divided out, and you're more than welcome to go if you want to as well. We're gonna do some howdy rounds to all the businesses. We're gonna start that soon.
Yeah, we talked about it.
There's plenty to go around, so.
Do we have some business?
If any, we might take an afternoon off and go around and see some places, but.
Right now, I can't take any time off.
I should've mentioned that, I think Kathy just.
I should say, I started doing it this week and didn't get one complaint, a few questions, you know, about things going on in the township, but almost, I went to 10, and almost resoundingly, what a great job we're doing over here, and business-friendly, and I handed out that card, and several said they'd be here, and it really went well the first 10 I visited.
Oh, I have one question, and it has to do with the median. We had a meeting about that a couple, like, two meetings ago. Are we doing anything in particular at this time, or what's the steps that we're taking?
What are we, I'm sorry, Mr.?
The median?
The median, yes, yeah. Do we, status on the median?
Yeah.
The board approved it at our work session.
Yes, there were some, how do I put it, somewhat unique plantings that are going in there. So the plants have been ordered, and we're actually waiting to, the weather kinda die down a little bit. But yes, we, we're getting all the ducks in a row, if you will, the materials. We don't wanna just go out there and mound the soil and say, oh, we gotta wait another two weeks, three weeks to put the plants, but yeah, we are moving forward with that.
Okay.
So. If there's nothing else for a regular meeting?
I just have one other question for James. You mentioned we're having a work session next week. What are the primary topics, and how should we prepare?
So it's budget finance-related. This is, as we talked about on the retreat, that was the number-one issue before. We were gonna look at, you know, fund balance policy and, you know, a couple scenarios with that, and an open dialogue with the board about anything that, you know, they wanna reach consensus on before we go into the next budget cycle. And then once the board has their arms around that, dive right into CIP, and we'll hope to get the CIP reach consensus on that, and so I assume we'll probably spend some time again, looking again at the, in particular, the pathways, the parks, projects, and try to wrap that up.
Okay. I was asking that question because you've sent out several different emails recently with updates to the strategic plan. I'm just wondering, you solicited comments from us, but you didn't give us a deadline, and I'm wondering when you'd like to receive those.
Good question, yes. I'm hoping that we would be taking a look at that draft at the, on the meeting on the 15th in two weeks, that the board can have a discussion around it, and if there's consensus at that time, just it'll be ready to be approved at the October 1st, October meeting. So yes, if you do have comments, feedback on that, then I would probably need to hear that by next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion, do it, Jerry?
No. We had a motion to take a brief recess, and then we're going to just wrap up the trash collection, SAD discussion. So that will take a brief recess, and we will come back here in a second.